Are you doing it personally?
Not for me.
Is it possible to get it posted?
I'll put it on YouTube.
Thank you everybody for coming.
Because I'm not lying, I'm the builder of whatever my new company is. And I mean, if you're already doing it, that's great.
Yeah, I'll be up there on YouTube.
Awesome, I'll thank you.
What?
What did I not?
City Council staff. I know there are directors here in the area. They're over there. So it doesn't look like they have quorum? And you know what's the truth? This reminds me of neighborhood council. I'm just going to stick to it. ..............................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................................
Thank you, good evening everyone. So the way that we're going to do this, we're going to make sure that when we do the public comment, the public comment is going to be the first part of our meeting and it will be on non-agenda items. Apparently tonight we have a quorum, so we will have no discussion or vote on the item on the agenda. So some of the board members are sure that they're quite busy with many things that they do in the community, so they might join us here tonight. So I appreciate those of you who are here tonight and were able to make it. The first part of this will be the public comment. We have cards for public comment on the non-agenda item. Okay? Excuse me, can we... Is there anyone here who I should speak on the non-agenda items? Anything else I could hear in the item to address the agenda at this time? Thank you. At this time, I'm going to ask the developer, Mr. Venegas, to begin his presentation. He'll give a presentation on the project at 2520 to 2668 Northeast Avenue. After the 15-minute presentation, there will be from the cards who will get folks to speak in favor or opposed to the project. The way that I would like to conduct this meeting is to be respectful of others, the same way that I would expect the board members to carry themselves in this meeting. Again, there's no current quorum moment, so we're not only here in the meeting unless we have a quorum that we're able to discuss as forward. Any resolution on this item, either to approve development, approve, or stay neutral. I understand that there is a lot of confusion regarding the project itself in terms of the previous boards approving this project. Let me make clear that for the sake of those of you who are coming to some of the meetings, this new board is entitled to hear the project all over again, as if it was a new project, because we have members. So in the interest of making sure that everyone had an opportunity to be able to speak on the project, including the developer, this is why the special meeting was put together for tonight. So, Mr. Venegas?
Good evening. I want to thank you guys for, first of all, being here, taking your time, and good evening to come and support or not support the project, and if you ask questions or any concerns you might have. I want to start by saying that I am the one who requested this meeting. And the reason I requested this meeting because through my knowledge, I have a lot of questions and concerns, and actually a lot of misinformation, and I need for help out with this project. We are not new to the area, we are not new to the neighborhood council. Yes, there is a new neighborhood council, or actually some new members. That does not mean that we have not been before the LA32 Neighborhood Council before. We purchased property about seven years ago, and we actually even have copies of agendas even before the boards since 2006. The project has changed throughout these years several times, and not for the worse, but for the better. We have not presented to this the present board because we have a little support dated a year ago, a little over a year ago. The reason we have not presented this board was because the city of LA has taken over 18 months since we filed our title process in late 2011. And the city's pace has taken 18 months for them to get to us and say that they're going to have a public hearing soon after the planning commission hearing. So from the time that we got the approval, to now, it's been a while. But as soon as we heard that we had the commission hearing coming, I sent my daughter back to the community to say, hey, we're finally moving forward on this project. That being said, I'm going to back up a little bit to tell you how we got here. And more than that, really, I'm probably one of those in this incident. I went to a surrounding junior high school back in the early days. I went to Wilson High School. And unfortunately, I did not graduate in '84, but that's the year that I should have graduated. My girlfriend, I've got her, Erica Kane, and that set the stage where Erica was 29 years old. My first business was here in San Antonio, on Eastern Avenue. My next school, Raisers, where the Salateco restaurant is at, on Eastern Avenue. 29 years ago, that was my first business at 18 years old. From there, I pursued to open up another store. Eventually, sold that business. And I want to kind of speed up, because I don't want to get into the presentation, but I thought you guys know who I am. I am not somebody that's coming out of another area trying to come to your community and dictate what's going to happen, or just go in there and make money and get out of here. It would be a lot easier for me, and for a lot of people, not to be here tonight. I requested this meeting. I bought the property through my listed investments throughout the past years. As soon as I bought the property, I had an offer from a huge developer who wanted to develop 225 units of this property. That property wouldn't have been built by now if I wouldn't have canceled Astro. The reason I canceled Astro was because when they showed me what I had to deal with this land, it was a monster. You guys think, how many looks bad, and some units are on the drive? It was a monster. I had an opportunity to cancel Astro, and I took that opportunity. When I was in Atlanta, double the money that I would have, the money bought the property. So to me, it was a home right there, and to a lot of people, when they decided to build, I canceled it. Moving ahead, we started working with the neighborhood council and the land use committee back in 2006. We have agendas, and unfortunately, the LA32 previous boards and previous boards do not have their agendas or their minutes which we requested. That is not our fault, and it's not the public's fault that that has happened. So I, you kind of feel that maybe now, now we're full of a lot of things that we're not at fault at. We have worked with LA32 aggressively throughout the years. Numerous, numerous meetings, town hall meetings, which have not been visible. And I'm glad that it's light this, because I like that people are coming out. You know, incidentally, has to get out and voice themselves, whether it's for the project or against the project. It's okay, I'm not taking anything personal. That being said, I'm going to introduce the project, and if I forget anything, I'll come back to it. Also, I'll take the time off, my architect is fixing his monitor, that there's been a lot of... I've been walking the streets of San Antonio since Monday, and when I got back, and I heard that there was a lot of concerns. I've been walking, talking to residents, and they're asking if there's going to be units, or is there going to be units for rental or housing? The approval letter that some of you guys have, or should have, is not in this register, and I'm offering to give you guys a copy of it. It specifically says "townhomes," which means for ownership. The previous board did not make it easy for me. The previous board put the hoops up and put the fire on, and I had to go through that. They did a great job, we did outreach, and why certain people did not get notified, I don't know. We'll get extended, I'll be expecting, not only last year, but for the past six years, okay? That being said, right there. This picture doesn't help me out, and I'll tell you guys why. Okay, I'll tell you guys why. This wall is about 18 high here, probably 15 at the rooftop. This building looks like a monster up here, and it does, it's not helping me out. But that being said, we are only doing one-story building on top of this hill, given 10 feet high, maybe five foot for a parapet wall around that, so we're talking 15-foot-high building on top of the hill. This looks like 100 feet at this point. So it's not a good reflection, and the designer did not do a good job, not better than the design. Duh, okay, that's a good picture. These townhomes are two stories. Okay, this is residential property here. If you see the height here, there's two stories. This one looks like it's four stories, and it's not, it's only one story. We have blueprints here that are vital to the city of LA, that you guys are willing to look at, and we have drawings on our computer that we're going to show. So please do not let this disdise you, that this is the way it's going to stand out. All the trees are going to stay, we're going to add a lot of trees to the area. So this is the view from Lombardi. The community cafe is 2,000 square feet. That is a two-story building, and it looks tiny compared to this, so this again is very misleading. This has its own parking. The neighbors back here have trees, mature trees that are there now, which are not going to be removed. We're going to actually add the trees to obscure some of, you know, or privacy from the building. Here's the other neighbors here. Can we go to this picture? This is the corner, we're going to have open space here. By the way, the property is going to have about 16% open space, which exceeds the requirement from LA City. Is that, maybe we have one from this picture? Okay, well, this is already on the property. We're going to have two access roads, one to the left, one to the right. Will be a stairs for people who walk to the school and go up. I'm going to be saying a few things during the presentation, so I can use my 15 minutes really wisely here. I am not a charter school operator, nor really want to be. I am a builder that's going to build housing, for example, and a school facility. We will, our intention is to find the best use of this facility with a charter school operator. Obviously, I have a contract with LUSD, that's a whole different story. So what we want to do is bring a charter school operator that's best for incidentally, whether it's elementary, middle school, and I encourage, if this project moves forward, for the community to come out, for LA32 to be involved in that decision of who's going to come into incidentally. I am not working for the record with any local charter school that's in the area from now on. Alonse, the director is here, Ricardo is over here. He has been working with me on consultation, because I saw the trouble that he has in his school, that is a church, and has spent over a million dollars to retrofit it, and it just doesn't work. When I saw the need for facility, and I told Ricardo, I said, hey, what would be your dream facility for any charter school? Space, classrooms, your parking. As you know, the schools over in the area are not adequate for the revenue, and that's the reason that we need facilities and space. Getting back to the facility, next picture. There's a community cafe, which, again, opportunity for local people, local merchants to come into this location. Existing merchants to come into the location. We envision this to be a community brand and youth for after-school. The kids can come and use wifi and whatever else will be available to them. Next one. This is the courtyard of the condos. The application, I mean, the approval letter says townhomes, condos. They've both been ownership. Condominiums have direct access to the garage, condominiums don't. So it's a technical type of unit, and the bottom line is going to be housing, not Section 8, that might hurt. It's not going to be units, it's going to be ownership property. This is the courtyard of the two-story condominiums. Another view of the entrance into the school, where it has an exit. This part here is two stories. The hill behind should be right above here. So when you're on top of the hill, and I hope you have a courtyard for this, it's going to show the one story. This second story comes down onto Eastern Avenue. So it doesn't sit two-story building above the flat area of the property. So it will not be a two-story when you're inside of the courtyard. Designing. How about the view on the other side, on the other side of this? This, I saw that in this video. Okay, again, trees will be planted, and 80% of trees, or if not 90% of trees around the hill will remain. Here we go. This, again, these neighbors here are about 30 feet below the property. And again, trees, and if you go there now, you can see that we're going to panel these trees, they're going to obstruct any views. It's really tough for me at this point in my development. I wish this would have happened a year and a half ago. I would have, you know, been, like I am, I didn't want to work with you guys, or design a whole bunch of other things. I've worked with LA32 through the whole process. They did not give me the necessary support until they knew the serious about this project and was going to invest in San Antonio. After this huge investment, we went to this city, applied, and got the application submitted. Spent a lot of money doing that, got here, and we have, I don't want to call it opposition, we have concerns. And we're here, so if I will leave more time on my presentation than you guys address your concerns, I want to spend as much time as we can with your concerns. We can always come back and address the pictures here during the concern period. But I really want to address as much as I can with you guys. And that's what I'm here tonight. I'm here for you guys, and hopefully we can somehow, you know, come to some, I don't know, understanding of that much. Not everyone's going to be happy, but that's the way it is, even if it's homes, I mean. It's impossible, it is impossible, humanly impossible to please everyone. Thank you.
All right, the way we're going to do it now is we're going to call the names, the cards. Mr. Venegas spoke about some of the previous work that was done by previous boards, and I appreciate you being in the history. We all, you know, some of us are new to this course, we want to make sure that we understand what this project is bringing to the community. So in this spirit of meditation, that everyone gets heard, yourself along with the community, we want to make sure that that happens. After the public comment, after the public comment, everyone who have one minute, a lot of people who have a lot of cards, everyone who have one minute, at the end of the public comment, we will have, and I hope Mr. Venegas, associate Mr. Venegas, and members of us here, take note of the questions that some of the community members may have for you, so that way we can address them. We will give you five minutes to address the questions. There will be no back and forth of questions, and typically determine what are some of the questions that have the commonality that will be asked from you. So we will begin, we will call one in one, and then the rest of the other. Rosa, is she there? Maria, is she there?
Good afternoon, my name is Maria Hockes, I'm a longtime resident here in El Cerrito. I'm close to the project, and I'm close to the market for people finding places to live, or education, school. I have taken pictures here of the cows that are empty, that we had one cafe, this one, 4882 Huntington Drive, empty. Then we have a beautiful, it's already landscape, at 4227 Huntington Drive, we have a cafe right here, and just above, because it's got a unit A, B, C, D, and 125, already established. Beautiful landscape. We also had low-income apartments that we were told were going to be for sale, condos, or whatever, not with Section 8. Commercial, downstairs, three of them have never been rented out, but have a school. At 2578 Huntington Drive, we have a fancy apartment, we even have a sign up that says, create a space for lease. One of one, create a space for a school. You have adjacent apartments next door, 176 units, a lot of potential students, and a lot of potential students to come through on this shit. We also had two charter schools on Huntington Drive, two academy schools. We have LNT's condos, here are condos, here are condos, Huntington Drive, up to the front, LNT says, Travis, LNT, and we have a middle school and a high school. We have a lot of available apartments also.
Thank you. I believe the name is Tricia Bowman. Tricia Bowman, would you like to speak, or you just, I guess, we'll just end it up to the people, just feel like the cards? Angel, can I end this, do I have to speak?
Good evening. I'd like to thank the board for being here today. I want to know what was presented, well, it's probably hard to find that, what was presented to the board to get the letter of approval, and what is being presented now? I'm not against development, I just think this is the wrong one for this community, especially when you have to rezone a piece of property to get it developed. If it's already zoned a certain way, that's the way the developer should develop that piece of land. And as far as people showing up to the meeting, I did go to a few, I've never seen this one. I believe that if people did do their due diligence and notify the community, there would have been more people here. This is grassroots right here. Thank you.
Jose Aguirre. And then we'll have Brian Pedroza, if you would like to speak. Maria S. Dejens, if you would like to speak. Just line up as we wait for Mr. Aguirre. And Richard Pizos, we'll call those names. You have one minute, sir.
All I can say, one minute is part of the meeting, we want to discuss, limited, just one minute. I was part of LA32 previous board, economic committee, board member, and we, I attended the land use committee meetings. There was minutes taken, there was registration form, everybody that came to me filled it out, and I saw residents there, and the main discussion points was just going to be rentals versus owner-occupying. And I made a big issue of this development, that being rental. And you pushed very hard to make it owner-occupying. And the reason for that is, there's a lot of rental properties already in existence, and when somebody provides ownership to the community, they're creating roots, becoming stakeholders. They worry about the car department, they worry about their schools, and because they have a lot of investments, they pay property taxes. So it's generational too, it's going to be something that we pass on to the families. So, okay, all I got to say is we reviewed the project, we had hearings, we had a term of law, and it was passed by the majority vote, and we give review of the project, and we do support homeownership in El Cerrito.
Good evening, everybody, thanks for allowing me to speak today. My name's Brian Pedroza, I'm a longtime resident, I work with Senator Watts's office, as well as the local campaign. And like you guys, I have a passion for my community, and I want only the best for it. But my comment is geared more towards an end of council, I know you guys have been in existence for a while. It's just some suggestions. In terms of meeting minutes, they should always be kept somewhere, it's my understanding that if they're stored somewhere, the board members can actually request to get those minutes. I don't know what the status means of that, or meetings, meeting minutes or agendas. Any organization has to keep it somewhere. One of my organizations that I ran, we had our minutes since 1904, so we're a pretty old organization, you know. Also, the issue, officer transitions, I don't know if you guys are familiar with that term. Whenever there's a new, old member that's leaving, such as during elections, these old members bring the new members, they bring them up to speed. It's like, hey, here's the issue that happened, this is what's going on, just want to give you a heads up. That way, this person comes prepared, and they know what's going to happen, or they have some insight. Because I feel that, like, it shouldn't have to be an issue that the developer is requesting, you requesting the developer to get the minutes, it's not, it's not his issue. Ultimately, we report, I feel that there should be more of that, of anything, yeah.
Maria S. Dejens? Richard Pizos? Maria Pedroza? Maria Pinoz. And then we have Josefita May May, okay? Um, Josefina Correjo, Mariana Garcia, and Tanta Magalhães.
Hi, my name is Maria Pinoz. I'm a resident of Cerrito, I've lived here for nine years, and I've been, I feel like I'm a real person in life. I received notices, uh, project. When I got the hearing notice, I wasn't able to split because I have toddlers, and we have a school year line on the siding. My husband was immediately concerned because of safety issues and traffic, and so we decided to keep the line and investigate the project more. I have some little concerns about the project, and I believe that the board would rescind their letter of approval based on the following. The developers are requesting a zone change and a general plan amendment to decide for economic purposes, and they're not taking into account the potential impact of the project would have on the immediate area and the community. In their application, the developer argues that this project would provide an adequate transition for commercial uses, but in reality, the existing commercial uses are not compliant, they're mainly non-conforming. They have small sites, not enough parking, they are not part of the project. The developers asking that we zone an area, we take it out of the protection of the hillside ordinance, and it should remain in the hillside ordinance because the intent of the ordinance is not based on the size of the parcel. It's based on addressing the unique topographical and geological chapter imposed to the subject site. On this one note, and in the mitigating negative action, the project staff recommends that the project comply with the hillside development guidelines, so the city itself is recommending that they do that, and they're asking for a result to retain the hillside ordinance. If you cannot send a letter, I urge board members that do not support the project to write to the council. This is not presented as an ownership option, this is a parking building.